All right, we'll call it November 13th, meeting of Lock Haven City Council. Please rise from your seats filed by the legislative leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll coffee.
Councilmember Fireland.
Here.
Councilmember Conklin.
Here.
Councilmember Missouri.
Here.
Councilmember Stevenson. Councilmember Brinker.
Here.
Councilmember Morris.
Yep.
Mayor Long.
Here. Uh... I have approval of amendments. I need approval of amendments for last year? No? Yeah, like that. Oh, the comments, requests, comments from residents and taxpayers. I know there's at least one gentleman here has some questions. Can you state your name?
My name is James Tamaney. I'm looking for an answer on how I can, what the proper procedures are for vacating an alleyway in Lock Haven.
Let me ask some staff here, maybe they can answer the questions.
Proper procedure, you make a request to city council and send that to my attention and then we have different city staff who review that before it goes before council for their consideration.
So when two people make an agreement to vacate an alleyway, is there any kind of like application? Does it have to be notified? Do both parties have to come in front of somebody to have it okay? Or verify that both parties are on board?
Well, the only party that can make an agreement, so to speak, the only party that can vacate an alley is the city. Two property owners having some kind of agreement about an alley doesn't really enter into council because private residents can't make agreements for the use of city streets.
What I'm getting at is if me and my neighbor want to vacate an alleyway, can my neighbor go on my behalf to the town, to the city, and get it vacated without the neighbor?
I, it's really difficult to answer like speculative things. I have to see an action.
Can two people? Can one person come to the city and say that my neighbor agrees with me, we want to vacate this alleyway? That's what I'm asking, so.
I think, I think it's an awarding you're using. You would be vacating. You're, you're asking, you're saying, let me, if I may, you're saying, can we come and ask the city that we agree that we aren't going to use this alley anymore? Would the city vacate it? Is that, that's what you're saying?
I'm asking if one party can come to you and ask you to vacate this road without the other party being present? Or without a letter being note, uh... Without a notary stamping it? Or some kind of paperwork showing that both parties are in agreement to vacate the roadway?
I don't think it requires other people. It may be helpful that they don't argue about it.
Example, let me get that. If I sell you a car, if I sell you the car for $50, me and you have to go down to a notary in front of a witness and have everything stamped? Does the city require that to happen for transfer of property? That's what I'm asking.
I think the, yeah, I think the, to answer your, the question I think you have in your head is, no, one party cannot show up and, and, and say, my, my neighbor is in agreement. We're not going to accept that. We're going to investigate that. We're not going to let that happen.
Part of the way we'd investigate that is nothing in the city that is a public right of way can be vacated without a public here. So at a public hearing, that's advertised, notified in the paper. In fact, when it comes to vacating streets, I believe that's forced, like four consecutive times that it's advertised in the newspaper. So the city council holds a public hearing and at that time, then anyone who would object comes forward and we have had examples where people have objected and we have examples where people have not.
Would you require, would the city require certified letters to go out to any neighbors of that road saying that we're thinking about vacating this road?
The current law does not require that. Doesn't require that certified letters go out to property owners.
So you can transfer property like that, a debt in a roadway to two people? And you don't see something that's stamped or certified or anything like that? A deed of some sort?
Well, no one would have a deed to the street.
All right. I mean, I'm, I'm, I know I'm wording this wrong and I apologize. If I wanted to vacate a roadway without your knowledge, you live on the other side of the roadway, can I do that?
You would make it, you can't vacate the roadway. You can make a request to council.
But I, well, could I tell the city that you were in agreement with me and I come down and?
You would make the request to city council. City council then advertises that someone has made that request and advertises the ordinance for sequential weeks, more than once, which is a normal ordinance. So multiple times it's advertised, a public hearing is held and that public hearing is where someone who would object would come and state that.
Okay. Is somebody required to send a notice of that public meeting?
It's required by law to be published in the newspaper. Yes. You can actually look that up online. The third class city code is available online and you can find a section in there about vacating streets. It's not terribly specific, but Title 53 is another place to, and that's in the Pennsylvania code. That's rules and regulations that apply to all municipalities, not just third class cities. And there's more information in that with procedures. But those are the procedures that the city follows.
Okay. So there's no formal notification to both parties?
There's a formal notification in the newspaper, but the city doesn't send certified letters.
How about the, how about the people that want to vacate it?
That's not a requirement.
I don't, I don't understand. I'm not sure that I understand. Basically, this street is, is a chunk of property. If I want to buy a piece of property, I get a deed with it. I get something telling me that I own it. So when you vacate a roadway, you don't get any kind of paperwork as to you own the roadway? Or an addendum to my deed saying that now you're responsible for half of the roadway? So if I sell it, the new owner knows that, you know, hey, you own half the roadway here.
We notify the county, which is the procedure that's required of us. So we do notify the county assessor's office. What they do with that information after that point is, is a question for the county. I can't answer how they address that in your deed. But they would be able to address that. The county assessment office.
Would it be odd if I owned half of a road since 2018? And never got any kind of notice that I'm responsible for something? That I gotta pay extra taxes on something? Nothing. Is that odd?
I don't know. Because your notice for that should come from the county. If your deed has been amended in some way. If you have some separate obligation that's not listed in your deed, that would have been listed by someone at the county.
Okay. Guess that's it. I don't know.
That, that, you all, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Residents, city taxpayers. Did you receive any via email or anything?
I was forwarded an email from someone which I can't give you a response to because I didn't get a response from staff members, but they had a question about, um, their address. Please sign by the county.
Okay. Okay, then we'll move on to, we don't have any requests this time. Casey. Okay.
Unfinished business for a consideration ordinance number 2023-10.
This is the second reading of amendments to chapter 105 of the city code which regards personnel. It is the, um, update so that much of the information that is listed in the personnel code, which applies to non-union personnel, matches some of the updates from the most recent, um, absentee union agreement. And this is the second reading of that.
Do you have a motion?
Uh, it's unmove.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion, questions, comments?
Should that not say 2023-10 at the top?
Oh, yeah.
I'm living in a different year doing the budget. You're living at home?
Yeah.
Thanks for catching me.
Next one says the same.
Yeah, same situation.
Anything else? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Fireland.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson. Oh, just kidding. Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. 4B, consideration of ordinance number 2023-11.
This is the first reading of the ordinance to fix the salaries and wages of non-union employees of the city of Lock Haven for the next three years. The first year would be the same rate as was provided to absentee employees in their agreement, which is the three-year average of the cost of living increase. The second and third years, which are 2025 and 2026 respectively, the increase in employee wages would be tethered to the increase in assessed tax value of real estate in the city is provided by the county assessor each fall with a not less than 1% and not greater than 2.5%. So if it, if the actual assessed value came in at 0.9, employees would get a 1%, but if it actually came in at 3.4, then employees would get a maximum of 2.5%. This also coordinates with the increase in, excuse me, contribution to, um, employee benefits for health and dental, which will go to 10% next year, 11% the year after that, and 12% the year after that. And that's percent of premium.
I'll move ordinance 2023 Delta letter.
Motion.
Our second emotion.
Motion for in a second. Any questions, comments?
I... There are some things in this ordinance that were either not discussed when we had our executive session on salaries or we discussed to the point where I was not paying attention. I wonder if we might actually take this under advisement until we've had an opportunity to think through what the implications, particular sections two and three are, and before we go on into the door.
And how would you like to proceed with that? You have a motion on the floor.
Well, I guess we do, don't we? I was rather hoping that we might maybe be able to take it under advisement and reconvene that executive session to, to thrash through the, the, those items that I don't think we discussed last time.
So do we want to take an executive session just to clarify?
I would, I would disagree with Councilman Morris's comment on that.
Now, I have questions about how we came that we were going to set wages for three years. Is that something we've always done or is that something new?
No, but it was, Mr. Morris, something that I did discuss in executive session.
I guess it doesn't hurt to clarify. So we'll, we'll enter executive session. Please excuse us so we can have a chat.
They can actually stay here if you want them upstairs.
You want to do that? Tell you what, don't, don't bother leaving. We'll go upstairs so you guys don't all have to leave if you don't want to. All right?
He's got good eyebrows. Waters.
Are you told? Uh, online, the city's website. You can just, you can do a last step if you want.
Go, is making a beer.
They might, you can ask them. That'd be like... Oh, I thought you were talking about the process. I'm sorry. You're talking about the, the deeds and the...
I got you, buddy. Yeah, I was all going upstairs. Or in this room over here. I don't remember where I got. I think you're on the rest.
That's where the trajectory to inner line. City's website, the third class city code is on there. So that'll give you, that'll give you the...
Third class city code.
Yep. And that's posted on your website.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. Call the meeting back. I have a motion on ordinance number 2023-11 and a second. Is there an amendment?
There is an amendment that for the removal of section two and three, which of course then makes section four section two, and section five, section three, and section six, section four. I will make that as an amendment to my motion.
You agree to that?
I agree to the second.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment. While we did have an executive session, I want to make clear and I fully address to council, we're happy to be giving our employees a raise that we believe they well deserve. We are, some of us, we're not comfortable with the idea that we would be setting a standard for the next two years basing raises on an unknown income that may or may not happen. And we wanted to have the ability to have fair and equitable raises next year that we consider, just like we have considered in years past. We thank the staff for their patience with this.
Any other comments, questions? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly?
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mazzorti?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yes.
Councilmember Braker?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. If we have any other unfinished business?
I have none, Your Honor.
Plan A, consideration of ordinance number 2023-12.
This is the first reading of the amendment to chapter 59, Fire Department, to account for two rather than three fire companies. This has been reviewed by the city solicitor as well so that Richard Morris can say, oh my.
Do you have a motion?
No. I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
We have some farming in the audience tonight, but I looked this over pretty carefully. And I think even though it's first reading, will second reading be next week? Or will be later on?
It just has to be adopted by the first meeting in December so that it goes into effect for January 1st, 2024.
Thank you. Under duties and responsibilities of Fire Advisory Board, I understand that Chief Wooding sent out an email with this proposed ordinance to the other companies and the officers and asking for individual comments. And that's not the way the system's supposed to work. It's supposed to have a meeting, and you sit down, and you go to a meeting, and you talk about these things that are in here. And then the advisory board makes a recommendation, yes or no, back to us. There's some type of things. The job description for the fire chief, I think I need to look that up. I really didn't have the time for that to do it, but I will. There's things like if it says the fire chief shall attend all fires. Well, Shell's a mayor, Shell, or if it's not in his first due area, is he still going to go? Are we going to run a piece of equipment there to get the fire chief to the call when we might have another chief there or an officer? There's questions they need to work out. Then there's the fire chiefs allowed to be responsible for dispatching of equipment, such as fires outside the city and mutuate agreements and parades and events, that's fine. But it should say city-owned equipment. It doesn't mean that you can tell citizens to not take something that they own to a parade. There's things like section, I can't see what it is, 59 and 11, general duties and drivers. It still says deputy and assistant chief under B and C. It doesn't reference deputy chiefs. And I don't know if they need to sit down and talk about how that system is supposed to work. It seems like it doesn't. You get to be a deputy chief, which is, in the past, I guess I'm the old school where they moved up every couple of years. You got your feet wet when your assistant moved to deputy for two years because you were assistant to, and you had to be chief for two years. And it rotated between the three companies. But now that there's only going to be two companies, there's less of a rotation. But it doesn't let the chief, the fire chiefs in the other company, have a chance to become chief. And maybe you want to change policy or procedures or do things. You could still have administrator, which is, I think you need. But a full-time fire chief forever until they're not appointed anymore doesn't seem like a fair and equitable position to have. So I think there's a lot, and I have other things, Mark, we won't delay longer. But I think it should be reverted back to the Fire Advisory Board to actually sit down and have a meeting person, in-person, face-to-face, and hammer out some of these things. And before we go, and if this is only going to have one vote on it, or a second vote we'll have, or like stretch it far enough that they have a chance to have a face-to-face meeting and work out some of these. I'm not against the consolidation. I think it's great. It's just logistics. There's things to talk about first due areas. There's things, there's other things to. Now's the time to change it if you're going to change it for the betterment. And it's just, it'd be good if it was done right.
They weren't provided this yesterday, you know?
Yeah.
There's nothing to preclude them to have met already and given feedback. But if you want to provide more time for them to meet more and give more feedback, you know, keep it still your first reading.
So what I was going to suggest is, you're okay with doing a first reading, and then, you know, they can, if there are any changes to be made, that we can.
Yeah, we need to work on it. I'm not sure where it all came from, but it did come from the advisory board, even though they were asked on an individual basis for responses. It's a lot different to listen to somebody else's opinion on something. I didn't think of that. Or, oh yeah, I didn't think of that either. Okay, now you put together a good program, not just have it.
Well, where it all came from, if you look at the majority of it, is exactly the ordinance that's in place today. So the parts that are buried.
With the strike offs.
Have to do with where it was necessary to make changes because we're going from two to one. Or three to two, sorry.
Do I have a motion on first reading? Do you have more on the chat after we make a motion? Do I have a motion? So, okay, I have a motion for a second further comment?
Do we have any input from the, from anybody sitting here? Guys from all three companies?
Yes, the plan is. Do we want to talk about that?
Yeah, I'm chairman of the advisory board, and I sent out a message probably five o'clock, four o'clock today to try and schedule an advisory board meeting. Because we don't have one scheduled till whatever, the third month's end of December. I don't know the date. But that's the next regularly scheduled advisory board meeting. But we're going to be having one here in the next week or two. I haven't got a response back from everybody as to their availability, but it will be within the next probably week to 10 days.
So it could have been a timing thing too, and not reviewed. I know it was sent out. I think, I know it got sent.
How much does this, I mean, this is just to me looking at the two companies coming together, correct? It's not talking about you guys and citizen making advisory committee to figure out where we're going in the future, correct? The ordinance only has to do with how the city interacts with the individual companies. The individual companies have their own rules, regulations, objects for, objectivity for membership, things like that. The city's ordinance only guides the city's involvement. So we don't direct people who are not city employees, for example. So it addresses what the city employees do.
Any other questions?
Just a quick one. In section 5910A, it says that in the absence of a fire chief, the district chief shall act as fire chief. But there are two district chiefs.
Depends on the district.
Do they have geographical responsibilities?
Right.
If they're not there, it could be a captain or lieutenant or sergeant, or the driver, the paid driver is in charge till somebody shows up.
Anything else?
Just to clarify, this isn't new information. This isn't, this isn't something that we, that just has been decided recently. This has been something that has been ongoing for the last 18 months.
The consolidations?
Yeah.
Well, the consolidations are individual decisions of those companies. That's nothing the city has any say in, basically. And so that's a decision that anyone who's a volunteer and a member of Hope's and Handys has been having those conversations for quite some time. The notice from those two companies that that is taking place and that it will be effective January 1st is what causes the necessity for the city to amend its ordinance to address how it addresses these two companies now instead of three companies.
So what's the prime, what's the timeline or progress for the actual consolidation? Do you have a projection?
January 1st.
January 1st?
Any other questions? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly?
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mazzorti?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson?
No.
Councilmember Braker?
No.
Councilmember Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thank you. Plan B, notice of audit results.
This is a notification from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency that they audited the most recent grant from the year 2021 that city planner Abby Roberts oversaw. And that they came back with the no fines fees from the civil audit review, which is great.
Plan C, notice of third quarter Comcast franchise.
And this is just so that the council minutes will reflect that the third quarter franchise fee collected by the city from Comcast is $24,613.91.
Five D, notification to Clinton County.
As part of the fire department consolidation, the city felt it was a good idea to notify the county board of elections and also the school district that the site of hand-in-hand HOs company is currently up for sale and likely will not be available to be used as a polling station in the first ward. And so that they have plenty of time to think about that and then.
So I have a question. When did council change its position on wards? I mean, we had this discussion, Doug brought it up one time, and we didn't take the position, and you stated in this letter that the city encourages the county board of elections. I don't recall the council taking a stand on that.
I don't understand the question about wards?
About the wards.
So the wards have not been used as a system of voting in the city?
I understand that, and I, and I get that. But to me, this should have come before council, before you send it to them. We should have given our opinion on this before something was sent saying the city encourages you to look at this.
Okay, well, it hasn't been sent yet.
Okay.
So it is before you.
Well, it was dated, it was dated as September 25th, so.
Well, that is when it was drafted. But it was not sent before election day because it didn't show up in the council package prior to that. So it was drafted September 25th and put on for this particular agenda. So if there is anything that you want changed in that. But as part of ward voting, the city would be obligated every census to true up the wards to make sure that they're equal population. And since the city hasn't done that since '71, we don't know if they are equal populations. So that would be something that if the school board is electing people based on the population in 1970 out of the first ward to a particular area, and there may be half as many people as there were then living there now, that would be something that you would think the school board would want to look at. But also the location of where they place the, the voting polling station for that area is the most important.
That does have to change, and I recognize that. And I would suggest that the letter be changed to end up the second paragraph. We can have this discussion with that in a public discussion about how we would proceed from there. But I don't think it's appropriate as far as this, when we didn't have that discussion.
I think so, it's okay to notify them now.
Absolutely.
They've given up any time. Because all they have to do is go find someplace on First Ward they have a polling place.
Right.
So it's just a notice to them for that. And it may be time, I know the county talked a few years ago. I remember the conversation about, does the city need five wards? Because we don't elect by ward, we don't, we elect by citywide. So maybe it's time to, it's all like first and second voting, who knows?
And I'm not saying that's not, I'm just saying. Currently, I think it should go at, it should go at the second. And we can have the discussion. But I think it needs to be public that we're having a discussion so the public has input and then we can decide what we want this as encouragement. And just to clarify, the county voter registration office, Maria Boylou and her staff obviously have to take any changes to commissioners. And they would actually vote on any final changes.
Right, right.
Right. But, look, I was in support of reducing the number of wards. She's got to be 10 years ago or more now. And that might have been the same time that you and I talked about that. It just doesn't make sense with the voter turnout or the population. Because I think if we look at the population of the first ward, we're going to find that, that even 15% of the registered voters may vote, but it's probably a single-digit percent of people that live down there. And I'm not, I'm not saying it's a good idea or a bad idea. I'm just saying it's going to save the county money. And I know you don't give a damn about saving the county money. I do. So, so from my standpoint, I would still support it, but.
No, and I said, we can, we can have that discussion. I just didn't think that wasn't put out this way. And we should have that discussion, the public knowing that we're having that and they can give their input. And then we can move from there. I didn't think it was appropriate in this particular letter. Anything else? Okay.
But I am not really sure what my direction is.
Does anyone agree that, with me, that we can remove that and we can address it separately at a different time?
So you don't want to notify the county?
Oh, no, no.
Those are first word polling places.
Yes, I do. Let them know that. Up to the second paragraph.
And the rest of it, we can talk about. Notify the county that the polling place probably will not be available for the primary election.
Thank you. Five B, announcement of budget scheduling.
This is the schedule for the 2024 budget, so that council can mark its calendars. November 20th, which is a week from today. The council does have a session at 6:00 PM with suburban and the filtration authority to discuss, further discuss water emergency. Then during their seven o'clock meeting, the budget will be presented to city council and made available the next day on the city's website for the public to review. November 27th would be with council's approval, the special council meeting for the budget hearing. December 4th would be the regular meeting of council with the budget hearing. And December 11th would be a special council meeting for the budget adoption.
Thank you. Five F.
Five F is just a letter for council to address some of the concerns that Richard Morris had raised at the last meeting about the city architect who.
Anything else under new business?
And I would say in that context that, that this note is a vast improvement on the quality of information that we've been sent in with last time. And if I make extrapolations based on that that prove to be incorrect, I make an apology for that because it's not my job to do the city's accounting. It is my job to turn over any stuff. And the fact remains that under the original contract, the schematics would do by about September 9th. They didn't appear then. So we're now looking at probably giving those the go-ahead at the end of November, which means that the final drawing should be presented about the end of February for bidding in April. And the new building hopefully to be commissioned by February, March of 2025. And the budgetary variations I noticed actually came from the battery stock included part of the, the contract, where the sites survey and geotechnical engineering were 89% overestimate. The only other comment that I would make, and maybe my friends on council are not as sensitive to this as I may be. I was a little surprised to discover that both our state representative and state senator were invited to attend to examine our facilities without any notice to cancel. And I think that's a lapse of etiquette. Apart from that, as I say, that is a far better understanding of where things were going than we had last week. And I'm grateful to you for that.
Thank you. Any other new business?
I just have a question. Can we get an update on the water emergency? Is there something that, is there any new information that folks need to be aware of?
We are continuing to pursue the wells as the supplemental source. And there's a lot involved with that, as you can imagine, between property owners and the township that they're located in, et cetera. The city has had Dave Bonkovich working on leak detection. And so far, he has found 11 leaks in our system. And his equipment to find leaks is much more sensitive than the city. So of the 11 that he has so far found, that equals about 140,000 gallons per day is the estimate in savings. Five of those are customer lines that residential or commercial customers have been notified that they have 30 days to make those repaired. And six of those are on city lines. And so those are in addition to another, I believe, six that our own listening equipment has also turned up. Our listening equipment can't tell you how many gallons is long to be saved. Mr. Bonkovich is Ken. So we have been working on our six plus, again, those six that Dave Bonkovich notified us of today will be on this week, the next week's agenda. So we are actively working to reduce water. We hope that consumers are, although I will say they're not. Consumption did not go down over the last month when mandatory restrictions were put into place, it actually went up. So people pressure washing buildings, that is prohibited. That is not permitted. You may see signs around people wanting you to call them to pressure wash your home. That is not permitted. That is a waste of water when we only have 70 days worth of drinking water left. We have asked all major industries to severely reduce their consumption, and they have agreed to do so. And that is, you know, a loss of productivity for some of them by, other than completely closing your doors, which is the alternative, if we actually go to mandatory rationing of water. So we are hopeful that we'll have the wells online, hopefully just after the end of this month. But we'll learn more from the city engineers on Monday, the 20th at 6:00.
Thank you. Any else under new business while we're still there, any questions? Okay. FYI reports, authorities, boards, committees, the old phase one updates.
Thank you from the Halloween parade team from the fire department. Copy of the letter to Norfolk Southern with council's response about closing the intersection and also the holiday party invitation with the usual suspects put onto the RSTP.
Well, as far as Halloween, thank you. I want to thank the fire department. Went really well this year. Enjoyed how it went, the party at the park. I think that really works out a lot better than what we've done in the past. So thank you. Anything else that you brought for council tonight?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I have four. I have to admit that I've made many mistakes in the nearly sixteen and a half years that I have been on city council. And I may be making one right now. I'm a bit taken back by the way some of the team that I believe the council has, for the most part, over my years, acted as a team by what seems to be an intentional attempt to propagate disinformation and disseminate it to the public. I apologize to the public, my neighbors and my neighbors for not addressing it as I saw it initially. Beginning with Mr. Morris ran last week that, and many of you have heard it in the past because it's not the first time he's done that. Councilman Morris, if you had asked the city administration, they could have shared with you that the police project information had already been received and reviewed and revised and sent back by the chief. Maybe your people skills and your approach need some work. Additionally, I have heard a local media outlet who over and over again complained that the city manager had not yet disclosed what the reduction of police coverage from 24 to 20 hours a day would have saved the city. Any council member had the information at their disposal to access that information. I certainly was never asked for that information. For the record, it could be depending on the rank of the officers on duty and the number of officers on duty at those hours in the region of $100,000 to $150,000 a year. I don't know any citizen that would suggest we not save that money. More importantly, the council has never voted on reducing police hours. It was made to sound like we had, but we never did. As far as building projects were considered, no member of council ever suggested that we were interested in spending $6 billion plus on a new city hall and police station. Frankly, at the meeting where the proposal was given to us, no member of council approved of the $5,000, $5 million plus figure just to remodel this building. The proposal is what one would always get in a first draft, a Taj Mahal, right? That's what they would suggest. None of us were going to accept that. Councilman Morris claimed on the comparison of the square footage of the proposal, proposed police building, Church Street, to the Taj Mahal figures was insincere, frankly. I know that he is an intelligent man and knew those figures were corrupt. Most of the council, if not all, have toured this building top to bottom. It is an embarrassment to nearly all of us. The environment that, that our police work in is unsafe and unhealthy. And I, for one, am incredibly thankful for their willingness to wait on the stale light speed that this council of, this government works at for us to give them a space that they can be proud of. In conclusion, I am sorry for the misinformation that you have received. And for the record, the city council never voted on or even seriously considered a $6 billion building. And the city council never voted on reducing a police to 20 hours. Yes, my neighbors, keeping the city functioning costs us way too much. And we, council, the city manager, the city staff, and the city are investigating every possible avenue to bring it under control. Your new council will have their hands full. Thank you.
Anything else to bring for council? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
You do.
For adjourn?